Welcome to the November 3rd zoning board of appeals meeting. Tonight, we have, well, three cases combined into one and then one other one in an informal. So I'm going to have Mr. O'Reilly read in the first case for the three.
Thank you. Case number forty-one eighty-five. Plymouth zoning board of appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, Twenty-sixth Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. on Monday, November 3rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM to hear the petition of McReiko requesting a special permit required per section two oh three seven C three to waive the required driveway width per section two oh three seven F two to waive the required parking area width and driving lane width per section two oh three seven J, Table three, to waive the number of required parking spaces for hotels per section two oh three eight A, to waive off-street loading requirements to convert one existing, existing one and two-story, two-family dwellings to hotels on lots ten, ten R, and fourteen Howland Street. Lighting plan required per section two oh three seven F four, parking areas for more than ten vehicles per section two oh seven four, prevention of light pollution on the property of ten Howland Street, shown as parcel oh one seven oh oh oh, one-two-five oh oh oh, of the assessor's map dated January one, twenty twenty-four, in a DH zone. The petitioner or his or her representative or any other person interested in desiring to be heard on this request should appear at the time and place designated.
Okay. Sitting on this case will be Ed Conroy, Kevin O'Reilly, Pete Hana, and Dave Peck and myself. And who's presenting?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Rob Dambroso, attorney at Dambroso Law here in Plymouth. I'm here on behalf of Meg Reiko, or I guess Rick's Special Purpose LLC for this project. I've got Rick Vayo here, the principal with me. I've got our civil engineer, Mark Flaherty, here as well. So I just wanted to maybe give you a two-minute sort of bird's eye, high-level view of what we're doing, the legal relief, and then I'd like to turn it over to Mark to run you through some particulars, if that's okay. So first off, you guys remember, I think, I think everyone on this board was here about a year ago, a year and a half ago, and we got the adjacent hotel permitted. So just to refresh everyone's memory, a twenty-five unit hotel on Chilton Street was permitted by this board in spring of twenty twenty-four. This is a new separate project. It's a little bit different, though, because the primary relief that was granted last year doesn't apply here. Even though they're adjacent, we're in a different zoning district. So last year's project on Chilton Street, the twenty-five-room hotel, was in the R twenty S L zone. So we actually needed a special permit from this board to allow this use. We were going from one non-conforming use on that site to another non-conforming use, which was the hotel use. In this case, fortunately, we're in the downtown harbor district, zoning district, and that's a hotel is a buy-right use. So we're allowed to do the hotel, which is good news. And again, I think that really was the core relief last time. So really, what this petition is focused on is just the overall site, but just a couple small waivers, like Mr. O'Reilly read into the record, really pertaining to dimensional items. I would point out, the advertisement is a little bit stale in the sense that we don't need a waiver for the number of parking spaces. That one dropped off when this project was initially proposed. I think that was maybe how Lee or someone kind of punched it up. But in the downtown harbor district, you can buy right, buy down your parking spaces. I think we're short by three or four from what we would need if we didn't want to buy them down. So again, just to be clear, we're not seeking any waiver of the required number of parking spaces. We'll deal with that on a buy-out, buy-right basis. So just wanted to be clear that we don't need parking relief in that respect. So again, this is a smaller project compared to what you guys approved last year. Seventeen rooms. It's similar in the sense that we're converting existing structures. I think we have three structures that are being converted here, a small addition on one or two of them, as you can see on the plans, and Mark will run you through this. Again, and we just have some minor site-related waivers, but the planning board was favorable to this. We got a unanimous positive recommendation. We've been through the historic district at this point. You know, Rick can give you a little background on the management and operation of the hotel, but it's going to be a nice, high-end boutique hotel that we think is going to be a real boon to downtown, and I'll turn it over to Mark to run us through the site plans. Thank you.
Good evening, Mark Flaherty. And you have your PowerPoint in front of you, and I'll be going through a few slides. The first slide is the aerial photograph. You can see where the project site is at ten, ten R, and fourteen Howland Street. See if this works. So this is Court Street, Howland Street, Chilton Street, a short distance down to Water Street, right through here. We have a vacant parking lot over here. We have the, another large parking lot behind these commercial buildings right through here. So essentially, as we did before, there's a lot of on-street parking, both on Howland Street and throughout the, throughout the whole area within like five minutes of the zone. So the next slide talks about existing conditions. Ten Howland with its two units. This is ten over here, ten R with a single unit, over here fourteen with two units. There's two separate driveways going into the property, a lot of green space through here, a little row of arboretis in this area. The project site, like it says, eighteen thousand, zoned for downtown harbor, water and sewer. And this is the parking lot for the commercial buildings on Court Street. This is a vacant parking lot over here. Chilton Street is back over here with Rick's Hotel Project. So we have a small sidewalk right through here. Let me go back over here. The next slide shows, this is ten, fourteen, this is ten R back over here, if I can back over here. There's a garage that will be coming down as part of the project. Again, this is fourteen Howland Street, and it's historical properties, and Rick will restore these buildings back to life. He'll describe that in, in a few minutes. For the site plan, essentially, we're, we're adding, as, behind ten, there's a small seven-by-fifteen addition right over through here. Then behind ten R, there's another small little addition. These, these are ten feet off the property line. There's a small deck that's going to be added to fourteen. And this is going to be a one-story community facility to serve really almost both hotel units for any type of, if the guests have, have any type of function that they want to have, or there's someplace that they can congregate in this community facility. Rick will talk further about that. The two, the two driveways have been consolidated into an eighteen-foot wide entry. We have another sidewalk over here, enhanced sidewalk. We have, for the seventeen units, we're showing thirteen spaces, and we, it's going to be served by water and sewer. We have onsite drainage. Rick wanted to make sure that he left a lot of green space back over here for any type of just gathering that might take place. There's a fire pit up through here. We're going to have some tasteful landscaping that we'll get into the next slide. So water, sewer additions that work. There's no real grade change through here. There's just maybe a two or three-foot rise going, that goes down to some drainage in the low point, and then just picks up a little bit through here. So the site works from a civil engineering standpoint. This is just what, what he, what Rick has in mind for really providing enhanced landscaping to this, to this site. As I indicated before, there's very little trees on-site right now, so anything, so he's going to be bringing in quite a, quite a bit of landscaping. The landscaping has to comply with the drought-tolerant and native species, so that's what we will do. But this gives you a sense of how Mr. Vayo plans to really kind of spruce up the site. So with that said, I'll turn this over to Rick, and I'll come back to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. Jump to the next slide. I, I think you're all familiar with our projects in the past. I'd run through them quickly. The Armory, you know, complete restoration, the registry. You certainly had all of them, but the Bradford in downtown, on the waterfront, eight Chilton Street, a residential home renovated. So this project is, again, it's a sister project to the hotel that's on Chilton Street, certainly of the same standards of what we proposed on Chilton Street in terms of the renovation. If I go back to the existing structures, you can see, they're, they've been heavily abused over the last, you know, fifty years. You know, it's vinyl siding, it's, it's doors closed up that were probably architecturally significant, you know, mismatched siding and roofing materials and whatnot. We will bring them all up to speed from a historical basis. We've been in front of historic. I think they were quite pleased. I believe it was a unanimous vote for what we were doing. These will match in terms of color scheme and aesthetics to the Chilton Street set so that there will be times when both, you know, facilities will operate as one, say if there were a micro wedding or a, you know, some type of, you know, bridal shower, something of, of that nature, and they were renting out all the rooms that have the function facility and that also have the use of the, you know, of the grounds and whatnot. Everything will be entirely fenced and, as Mark indicated, landscaped all the way around. Again, the quality level that we're going into this, this is a, you know, higher-end boutique hotel. That's the level of quality that the structures will be renovated to. Total of seventeen rooms in this configuration. You know, again, all, a variety of rooms like the Chilton Street side was, anywhere from single rooms to sort of mini, mini suites. We will be operating these independently, but also looking to operate them jointly, depending on, again, what the, the function is. An example, some professors or the head of the department at B.C. had, one of the professors had reached out to us, and when they, I think, heard the, the last one go through the permitting process and said, hey, would you be interested in, you know, a retreat for our professors? And sure, I mean, that's something that we would look to do, those type of things in the off-season. Obviously, I think they're going to do extremely well during our high seasons from, you know, you know, probably May through November, and the, the shoulder seasons, we'll look to do, you know, more smaller events, that type of thing. So we're more than happy to answer any questions on this or elaborate on anything that we've, we've said. But as Rob indicated, you know, the relief that we're looking for is mainly from a dimensional standpoint centered around parking, and I think a few odds and ends. The use is, you know, is a loud use in the district, and we feel is, you know, very appropriate for the site and will enhance Howland Street, you know, dramatically.
Any questions for Rob? Can I listen?
Rick, who owns the, the parking lot on eighteen? And do you guys have access to that?
The parking lot on what?
Eighteen Howland.
Uh, the next one down, meaning the empty parking lot?
Yeah.
We certainly don't have access to it. I know it's owned by Kevin Crafty, and I assume at some point that will, you know, get developed in some way. I, you know, I, we don't have any access to it. We don't have any control of it. We do feel this parking ratio is the same parking ratio, actually a little bit better, but roughly the same, that we used on Chilton Street. And when we looked at the studies across the country that had been done on, you know, what the bylaws, you know, were in place for the last, you know, forty, twenty to forty years versus if we were to relook at them now and how people, you know, arrive at facilities like this, it's well within lines. And, and, you know, keeping in mind that parking is obviously important from our standpoint because if our guests aren't happy, they're not, you know, they're, they're going to make that known and probably look for discounts and probably not come back. So we feel this is a pretty, a pretty good ratio and matches the, you know, the Chilton Street side.
David?
Yeah, I just want to follow up with a couple parking questions. So you know parking spaces ten feet wide are important to this board. I see you've got nine and nine and a half. I saw nine and a half was folded into some of the drawings in, in the second submission.
Right.
I guess, tell us, again, the justification for the smaller ones, or could the design be modified to give ten feet and one fewer space or something? So just tell us about the calculation on parking space size.
Sure. So all of the projects that we've proposed in downtown Plymouth, and all the ones I ran through a second ago, Armory, Registry, the Bradford, even going over to the Mount Pleasant School, all of them historically have been nine-foot spaces, and we've done fine with them. One of the things, I think the difference being is that, you know, we, number one, we're, we're there all the time and we're monitoring, whether it's the management company or the manager or, you know, whatever. Someone's always there monitoring that. We also assign spaces. So when someone comes in, we're going to tell them, this is your, this is your space, the same way we do with apartments. So we've never had any issues with them, and generally speaking, I think most of the times we've been in front of this board, it's been a unanimous vote on all of those other projects, and they've always been nine-foot spaces. The planning board did ask on a, is it five of them or six of them along that line? So we made those nine and a half to, you know, to help out a bit. But again, historically, we've never had an issue with that. I do see, you know, in a commercial parking lot of, you know, people going in and out every fifteen minutes. It makes a big difference. We have had very good luck and never had an issue, and frankly, I park in them myself all the time, whether it's a car or a truck, in all our properties, and we don't have any issues. So that's kind of the reasoning behind it. And honestly, losing any spaces, we've always gone with the philosophy that we'd rather deal with nine or nine and a half than lose a space. You know, we don't, certainly wouldn't want to go down to eight, but we, you know, we've managed with the nine, and it's worked well, and it's allowed us to balance that on-street parking versus off-street parking.
And related, our parking bylaw allows, if you control spaces within four hundred feet, that they would count toward the formula. I think in the past, you've said that doesn't work so well, but did you consider it? And then a related thing, when I go to congested towns and villages that have parking, the hotel often gives us a dashboard certificate that's good in any town parking area.
Yeah.
So have you considered that?
We, we have looked at the idea that can we use that, and, and we've talked to the PGDC in the past about that, and they were never a fan of that. You know, those tags were mainly designed for residents and, and designed for, you know, shop owners and that type of thing, and so we've tried to, you know, avoid infringing on that. We certainly do have other properties, meaning the other hotel, we have the Bradford within striking distance, that all have, you know, guest parking that is typically not filled. Most of, yeah, any of the guest parking spaces. If you went to any of our properties right now, you'd see multiple guest spots open. So we do have that ability to move some vehicles around if, you know, if, if need be.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to go through all these parking variations and, you know, what the rationale was.
Sure. And we do, and believe me, we, we kind of know, the, the planning board and the ZBA both want the ten-foot spaces, so we don't just dismiss it. We try to take a hard look at it as we're working through it. And then this one came down to, you know, we really didn't want to, we, we wanted as many as we could have on-site versus going out onto, you know, onto Howland or Chilton or whatever.
And a final question. Do we know what the per-space cost is to pay into the, the parking fund at this point?
I, I thought it was fifteen hundred. I could be wrong.
I can dig it up my email because I think I gave it to leave when we were going through the waivers, but it's, it's not a huge sum. I, I think it's around fifteen hundred, maybe two thousand per spot, but I can dig that up.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I got a couple for you.
Okay.
You know, I was disappointed, because when you first talked about this about a year or so ago, I was hoping you were going to connect to the other place to put that, get that other parking lot.
Oh, through the parking lot. Well, in my defense, we did buy ten Howland at the request of the fire department. So, you know, it's, it's, we, we did go out and try to make some moves to make that happen. The parking lot, we would love to, love to acquire, and I'm sure we will have continued negotiations, but it was just no way to make it part of this without, the only way we could physically make it part of this was if I was turning this into a seventy or eighty or ninety-room hotel, which I got to figure out if this one works before we, you know, we dive in that deep.
Yeah, yeah. No, no problem. But I was looking at it, I said, geez. Okay, so on the, when, on the parking slide there, where, where you have the backup spot at the end, I guess it's the west end.
Yeah.
And, right. Why couldn't we go one more space on each side? I mean, I, I saw in one of your presentations or part of it, in ours, you had the thing there for Uber and, you know, the self-driving cars, which, yeah, you know, sounds great, but that just sounds great. I, I keep on saying, you know, I, and I think it was around sixty, I went to the New York World's Fair.
Yeah.
And they had, the Futurama had a car that self-drove in the fifties, or sixties, right? And they are still there.
Yeah.
So I, why, why couldn't we fit two more parking spaces and just?
And you're referring, just to be clear, if I can, you're referring to right here and right here?
Right here. And, and?
So, so if we fill those, then the backup spot has to go that much further. The problem is, what we, we met with several tent companies.
Yeah.
And the space we've allowed with the extensions for the, you know, stakes to go in and whatnot, we're encroached down to the minimum to be able to have, you know, sort of a small micro wedding or a small party. If we go any further and we extend that backup, we end up, we, we can't fit any reasonable-sized tent. And that's, this isn't even a large tent. We're talking, I think it was like, you know, fifty by thirty or something like that. It's not, we're not putting in Barnum and Bailey's back here, but once we go further and then you add landscaping and then you think of, you know, any type of, you know, buffer zone between or bollards between that, it, that's what sort of crunched us down. And again, we feel pretty strongly, based on the research we did, and we talked about this on the, the eight Chilton, I mean, the Chilton Street project, that the ratios are right there with the way they're being handled on a national level. And I think I referenced some studies the last time from Canada where they looked at, you know, a, I'm making the numbers up right now a little bit. It was like a seventy-room hotel that had seventy spaces, and if they were to go through the exercise now of expanding that to a hundred and twenty-room hotel, it would still only need seventy spaces. So we tried to take that and many other studies' ratios and do better than that. So I think, I think we're there, and I think we have enough parking, and we're, again, we're trying to balance out that functional use to make sure that the facility gets used the way it should be because, you know, we're hoping these hotels are catalysts to draw people into downtown, not just from, you know, other parts of New England or whatever or across the country, but even from a regional level, that someone says, oh, wouldn't it be nice to have a micro wedding down in Plymouth or to have our, you know, bridal shower or, you know, whatever? And so we're trying to balance out all those pieces of have enough parking, have enough outside space, have the fire pits that people want, the function facility. So, you know, we, this wasn't, it didn't come up lightly. We really spent a lot of time trying to balance all of that out. So that's kind of the background for better or for worse.
Right, because I mean, you know, it's, it's the only one thing that kind of irritates me in the town, downtown area is the parking. I mean, no matter, well, just look at Brussels Street down here, you know? I mean, it gets ridiculous. They're parking everywhere, you know? So I, I don't know. I was just kind of disappointed. I suppose if you need it for the tent, I will see how it feels. Now, then, the water balance, we haven't, that hasn't been addressed yet, or is that going to be?
Michael, the, the water balance is simply doing a calculation, and the water department, on the basis of the calculations for the amount of water that this project will use, will charge Rick accordingly. So that's essentially, you know, prior to the building permit.
So it would be?
It's just working with Peter Gordon of the, the water division. So it's, that is essentially what they have for the water balance, is a set of calculations for how much water you're going to use and how much they're going to charge the applicant.
Right. Okay. But that has, so you'll address that before the building permit anyways?
Yes. Right.
And before you leave, Mark?
Yeah, sure.
On, I was reading in the air on, one of them, I can't remember, it was DPW, I'm sure. The fire department, the, the turn-in radius wasn't marked all that well. Did you redo that?
Yes, I did. It's on, it's on the set of plans in the portal, showing how the, how the actual standard vehicle, fire truck can get in and out of that facility.
Okay. All right.
Pete? Yeah, just, Rick, one question. You know the rear building that's going to be like a community building?
Yeah.
Is that basically just a big hall, or are you going to have the office and stuff in there?
Yeah, they'll be up the, I guess, let's call it the front end here. There'll be a, a small office and a small, what they'll, they term as a catering kitchen. So no gas, just electric to be able to heat things up, that type of thing. So it's not meant to be, you know, a full-blown function facility. It's meant to be, you could have a function, you could have catering brought in that needs to be warmed or whatever, but not, there's no, you know, formal cooking.
That's not where you would check into the hotel?
No, no. So on this hotel, this side, we will probably do the virtual check-in, which is very common these days. And then we'll either have, you know, management in the small office that's here, and then if it was a larger group coming in, they could also use the management office at the, at the hotel next door.
Yep. Go ahead, Ed.
Has the DPW responded to your email or your letter dated October fourteenth?
You know, actually, I can, Mr. Conroy, I was actually just about to step up there, so I'll just take that one. We actually, we, we do, we do have a new letter issued October twenty-ninth, was that last? You know, actually, I can, Mr. Conroy, I was actually just about to step up there, so I'll just take that one. We actually, we do, we do have a new letter issued October 29th, it was that last Wednesday, by DPW. And virtually every comment is satisfied. I was actually going to point out that two of the comments that I think Peter or maybe Michael raised.
So I don't, I don't have that and neither does, neither do you.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, because just for what it's worth, you know, comments satisfied relative to the fire truck turning template, that's in the most recent memo.
Looking at your file, we got a 350-page file. You know what page the response is?
I think we got them Friday afternoon.
104, the start of.
I don't, we've not seen October 29th.
Yeah, I only have October 14th.
Right.
I have, the engineering department's was 9:24 and then Mark's response, 10:14, and which I have.
I'm happy to give you my hard copy.
I don't see the DPW one.
Rick, I think Rick uploaded it Friday afternoon.
So has the board seen this? October 29th response?
Yeah, I think I have.
Commented on, on every, everyone was commented on.
Right.
Yeah.
So I can't find it, never mind. I printed out a lot of the stuff because my, it's easier for me.
Okay, well, Ed's going through that. Any other comments?
I do have one more thing perhaps was addressed in 10:29, but on the sewer comments of Mark's response, there was one that, response to number five, where it said, "We have updated the water and sewer plan to reflect this comment. We have a note that the community," blank, blank, blank. It's an incomplete sentence on your response to sewer comment number five. It's right after the word "community."
How come I don't have?
So essentially, the Board of Health, working with the DPW, wants to make sure they handle grease properly. So the question was, okay, do we have an outside grease interceptor? Or do we, the option was to have an interior one. Because of the drainage being all through that parking lot, there's no way permit-wise, state, state regulation-wise, you could put an outdoor grease interceptor with the proximity of the drainage. So that, that was my response, that we were going to put an interior grease trap facility. And that was, that was the option that was given, you know, you either put it outside or put it inside.
I was trying to finish the sentence. The bullet said, "We have a note that the community," missing some words.
It must have been the community building. Yeah. It says, it says on here, "Comment to be satisfied prior to issuing to building permit" because that's the standard operation for the Board of Health that would apply for that. And it's no longer a variance to do an automatic internal grease trap. So it's really not relevant to the DPW. I think they were just commenting, but that's really more of a building permit issue and dealing with the Board of Health.
Fine, I just wanted to finish.
Yeah, no, makes sense.
That's the intent, what the word "community" is.
Yep.
Thank you.
So Rob, one question for you. So I'm looking at number four. I know that you don't have it. This relates to the standard resident, parking spaces. And the applicant should provide a standard residential vehicle turnaround analysis for the proposed parking spaces due to the reduced parking space sizes. And the comment acknowledged by the engineering department, the applicant, and then their response is, "The applicant has added additional space to the turnaround space and has requested an additional waiver from the ZBA to allow for vehicles to back up more than once."
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's.
So where's that?
Yeah, so that's a good, good question, Ed. So when we were, when we got our first DPW comment letter, I think it was late September, maybe early October, Rick Boss, you're the engineering department, had pointed out, hey, I think on a technical basis, you should have a waiver for what you're describing, multiple turning maneuvers from a particular spot. And we actually brought that up at the Planning Board meeting last week, I think it was last week, time flies. Yeah, two weeks ago. And we said, hey, you know, just so you're aware of it, you know, we'd like to be sure that's voted on as a waiver item. And the Planning Board did unanimously vote to grant that waiver. I think they added that to the memo that you guys would have received. So again, it was something that basically DPW picked up on. We're happy to, you know, we've asked that that be kind of folded into the vote. And that's what the Planning Board did. So that's going to be part of your, the vote we ask you to make as well.
So does the plan that we have, the most recent plan, show that additional waiver, what they're asking for? It does.
That's those waivers solicited?
Any more questions? Okay, so right now, I'm going to go out to public comment. So is there anybody, would you like to speak? Yes, go right up to the mic. Make sure the light's on brightly.
So you can hear me okay?
Yeah. Move the, the mic a little closer, but.
You can have it all. So I'm Donna Abelliam, I'm a resident on Howland Street. Want to start off, I love your properties, Mr. Bayo. You've done a wonderful things for downtown and the toy store is pretty cool. I haven't been inside, it was too busy. But, so I have some questions, some concerns. Some of them have been answered, which I appreciate. So there's no connection between Chilton and Howland Street properties, right? You can't drive through or anything? And no one?
No, wait till, you, oh, I got.
Okay.
I was looking something up, but direct your comments to us, anybody that speaks to the public comment. And then they get to answer them at the end.
Okay, so that was one question is, are the properties connected or would they ever be? Traffic flow is one of my biggest concerns. I live there, I'm there all the time. My house is right there, you know, on the street. The one-way is just a nightmare. Like, if we had the police out there, we'd earn a lot of revenue because people just drive down the wrong way all the time. So now you're adding, I think it was 17 rooms, and it just concerns me, that much more traffic on that street. The parking, I think there's 10 lots, 10 spaces at best. They're all used. So again, parking, traffic flow, and just how you're going to deal with that and making sure people do not go the wrong way. Like, if you're coming, going south on Court to take the right onto Howland, it's so dangerous because you don't know if a car is going to be right there. And if you live there, you see it a lot. So that was one of my other questions. And I wasn't sure how many parking spaces there are within that lot versus then how many, if the rooms are full.
He'll answer, again.
Okay, so I think that was.
Right, he's done.
How many spaces there were. And the other one's just a personal thing for, like, if anybody can do with anything of the people who sit outside smoking near those properties, you might want to think about that. But that's all.
Is there anyone else? Nope, not seeing any. Bring it back to you, Rick. You can answer the questions.
So there are 13 parking spaces onsite. And again, we really take a hard look at the ratios of who arrives versus, you know, being some sort of Lyft or Uber or that type of thing. You know, public transportation of some sort versus driving there. In terms of the one-way, I mean, you know, I lived on Chilton Street for five years, so I dealt with crazy people driving both, you know, ways down that, doing 50 miles an hour. I dealt with, you know, Howland because I always was around there, people coming up the wrong way. We intend to put a sign, you know, at the end, probably here, saying, "Left turn only." So I don't think we'll have that issue coming out of the property, you know, adding to the chaos of people driving the wrong way. Beyond that, I can't really comment too much on that because, you know, it's kind of a more of a police DPW thing and whatnot. Or maybe some more signage. I, I don't personally think the signage at, at the Water Street end of Howland is really adequate. I think it should be better in terms of, you know, one-way and whatnot, but, you know, that's, again, that's not my job. And now, for the life of me, I'm forgetting your fir, oh, the connection between the two, sorry. So there will be no physical driving connection. There would be a footpath between the two, but absolutely not driving because, you know, you, we need green space in both facilities for people to congregate or just, you know, sit outside or whatever. So now there'd be no driving connection at all.
Now, we just, did bring up something interesting though is, okay, so, Mark, when you were talking about the multiple turn spaces or whatever, how are you, how is that addressed? Because again, is, so I'm looking at the legal ad, I don't see anything mentioning that in there. Or maybe this would be a?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hi, Chairman Lee. Yeah, that, you know, so again, that's something, so we talked to staff at the Planning Board hearing and said, look, this kind of came late because DPW, again, not to disparage them, but they don't always get his comments, you know, month before the hearing. I think we got them, you know, a couple of weeks before we were to appear before the Planning Board. There was no time to republish the ad. I talked to Lee and said, look, you know, we're kind of need, I think maybe we should, and he actually, you know, again, you could ask him yourself, but he was kind of on the fence, well, I think it's understood, you know, that the ZBA has discretion to, you know, waive certain, you know, dimensional items. He said, I said, well, I think we should probably put it in there. So he said, okay, let's have the Planning Board vote on it. And we did vet that with the Planning Board on the floor of the Planning Board hearing two weeks ago. And I mentioned it with that same rationale. I said, look, we got these comments. DPW is asking for another waiver. I don't know if you agree that we need it or not, but to be safe, we'd like you to vote on it. And the Planning Board did unanimously vote and recommend that waiver to this board. So I guess the answer to your question is, it wasn't published, but that's how we got here.
Yeah, no, so my only problem with that would be was, I suppose it's a waiver that probably, I don't know that anybody would have an opinion or objection to, but it is kind of hard to stick something in there that's not, not advertised.
So I guess my other response, and again, I'm trying, not trying to be deferential toward the DPW, my real response would be, the Building Commissioner didn't direct us to seek that relief. The Building Commissioner didn't make that determination. So again, I think that's the DPW maybe being a little overzealous, in my opinion. We can only really seek the relief that the Building Department directs us to seek.
Now then I had, so I would have a question for Colin and then probably for Ed. So what do you think, I mean, as far as going to get a permit, when they're applying for it, do you think that's going to be actually an issue? I mean, we're at something DPW brought up after?
As far as that parking?
That waiver just for the multi-turn park, I don't know how they?
Right, it wasn't identified when we initially reviewed this application as a waiver that would be required. So if it is a DPW comment, I would need them to, you know, address whether or not it's, it's applicable.
Okay. I mean, one thing we just, as I could mention, is that the DPW comments on a lot of things. It doesn't necessarily mean that it is required or it supersedes the Building Commissioner. I mean, we go through this all the time, that, you know, there'll be lists and lists of things that aren't necessarily in their purview, but they get commented on. I think at the end of the day, like Mark had just commented, I mean, we don't really have to have that as a, as a, as a waiver. It's outside of the, you know.
The Engineering Office has a new traffic, a new traffic person up that way. And I think she went through it. And in order to just acknowledge her comment, I said, well, maybe we'll just ask for another waiver. And not thinking about the legal aspect of it. But then, in my, in my 30 years of engineering, I don't know if I'm up to 40, but anyways, it's a long time, that we really don't need that waiver. So if the board felt that from a legal standpoint, it's a little late to ask for that. I, in my estimation, there's, you know, any of the, any of these people, any of the board members parking at that is not going to be maneuvering more than, they're just going to be pulling out of the space like normal. So that's, that's my response at that point. I don't know if that, if we can just handle that way, Michael.
My question, Rick, is, do you feel comfortable taking that chance? Because I think we really should stick to the legal ad.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I mean, I don't think it's a requirement. Again, I think it's, it's, you know, I, I think it was mentioned, is what it boils down to. I don't think it's a, it's a requirement. We have certainly, is, is one of the waivers the lane width? Or is it, yeah, so if one of the waivers is the lane width, then it is a natural assumption that you potentially could make an additional maneuver to get out. And that's, in the history, I haven't been here that long, I'm definitely a wash ashore. It's been 13 years. We've had many lane width reductions. Never has anyone asked for a multiple maneuver waiver.
Because I mean, unless Ed feels differently, I feel we should.
So we used to, with, we used to, when Manfredi was around, he would always add, or any additional waivers requested there too. There was an extra sentence that used to be in all the publications. So since that's been taken out, you can't just add a waiver.
Right, well, that's what I feel.
So we just, so to answer the question, answer your question, we can't do it no matter what.
Right. So I guess, so you feel comfortable if we pass a legal, you know?
100%, yeah. No, I'm fine.
I think, if I could.
Yep.
I, yeah, I agree with you, there's no way we can add that in there. But I think we've never seen that.
No.
I've never seen it. But I think, because for the most part, we deal with shopping malls and Dunkin' Donuts. That they have the proper width.
Right. I think we, you know, on the.
We regret that sometimes.
Armory, Registry, all of those, or most of them, Bradford, they all had lane reductions.
They did?
They did, yeah. They had lane reductions, but it didn't mean that we all of a sudden had a multiple turning point.
Yeah, okay. And I don't have any problem if we go with it the way it is, but I, I think if the Planning Board told you it should be added in, somebody should correct the Planning Board because there's no adding things in if it's not in the public.
Well, I think Lee had, had mentioned apparently that the ZBA had some discretion to, and I think it's probably based on what Ed was saying, that, that line, which if it's not there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess again, as Mr. Bayo said, he's comfortable with you guys voting, obviously, as you see fit. But from my perspective, I do believe this board's taken a position in the past that so long as the public has ample notice of the nature of the project and the particulars, this board has in the past been okay with voting on, I think to Ed's point or maybe it was Kevin's, you know, other relief that's reasonably related to the core relief being requested. So I do think this board's done that in the past.
That's when we had the language in there. We used to, and so I think, Rob, future filings, you want to make sure the publication is, or any requested waivers there too.
Yeah.
If you just put that four letters in there.
So if I have to make an extra turn backing out, I'm coming in to complain.
Yeah, yeah, I think the question.
You're going to get a gift certificate to the Plymouth General Store for $5.
Put that in writing, will you, please?
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, I'll also point out, when we get to it, one of the conditions says the applicant shall satisfy the Engineering Department, DPW. So, so there's, you know, dealing with that, I don't want to have to change that to say, except for the turn, I think we just go with what's advertised.
Right.
I, I agree with David, it's condition nine.
Right.
I think it covers it.
So just to that point, what I, what I don't want to have happen is, is we vote tonight and then we get in this, you know, conundrum with the DPW that they won't let this go. So I, I guess I would respectfully ask that the ZBA vote on that, I don't know, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not going to say it the right way, but that that comment doesn't have to be fully satisfied or to work with the DPW on that, but necessarily doesn't have to be fully satisfied. Because again, I don't even know what their purview or ability to say, no, you have to have that versus, hey, we're just bringing it up.
Never had that before. Never had that mentioned before in 23 years. Been on 20, I don't remember it at all. Been on 20, I don't remember it at all.
This board's never disregarded a DPW comment?
We don't, we don't, they're the experts, we try to go with, we go by what, I always follow the fire department, I follow the DPW, and I use the planning board as advisory only.
So, spreads are just...
Could I have a question, though?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I don't, I remember the, I don't remember the armory or any of it being nine and a half. Do you remember, I don't remember, I don't remember once where we allowed, the athlete just said a couple different, the armory, I don't remember the, I thought the, where the, I don't remember any of them being nine and a half, because we've always stood firm on 10. And I would think it's, if you can remember, do you remember anything, Peter?
No, I don't.
What about you, David?
I mean, we have, okay, nine footers, but I'm just trying to think, we're, I mean, a lot of nine footers around town.
So the only time we've allowed a reduction is when the, remember, White Horse, we had, it was on their own property, and we needed, they needed to put a parking space in there where we allowed less than 10. But I personally don't ever remember a nine and a half.
I mean, even as early as Davis Manor, that you guys approved, just a few years ago, which I don't think you voted for, Ed, but everyone else voted for, were nines and tens. I mean, that, there's been, like I said, I mean, all of our projects, they've either been all nines or some tens and mostly nines.
So, just, if we could...
On three chilton, what are those?
Nine, nine, nines.
They're nines, so we did approve those.
Yeah, yeah.
So, just a question on process, that I don't know that I was aware of. So, Spencer, in that department, they dictate what exemptions you need to request?
No. Yes, sir, so, you know, every project, every commercial project, particularly in the town, a zoning permit application gets filed, and it can either be approved or denied, they're routinely denied, even if you just need site plan review and no waivers, but, you know, they always specify why you're being denied. So it'll say, "Seek site plan review," or it'll say, you know, "You need relief X, Y, and Z." So, again, and obviously, the building department's the one that ultimately issues the permits, so they're kind of the enforcement, you know, the executive function for the town in terms of applying the zoning bylaw. So, you know, we always refer to kind of what they request. We don't say, "Okay, can you give us three more waivers?" We don't even have a way to do that, really. So, again, that's why when the DPW chimes in and says, you know, "You should seek relief under this section of the zoning bylaw," you know, I do think they're kind of out of their lane a little bit, because they're not the ones that administer the zoning bylaw.
Right, because Spencer said that didn't come from them.
Right, so when we initially, you know, reviewed this, we don't typically or ever require a turn radius plan for, you know, passenger vehicles that are utilizing the normal parking spaces. So, as Ed mentioned, or we would rely on, you know, DPW's expertise in identifying those kind of scenarios. So, I would say it's up to the board what you would want to satisfy that concern, whether that be a condition to show otherwise, that the turn radius is adequate for those cars.
Okay, and I, but I think the issue that David noticed is because it requires DPW approval in the condition, is that what it was? But, yes, but to come back to us, to come back to ZBA, that was my other comment, is whether we want to have them returned to the satisfaction of the building inspector or they come back to us again. If you look at draft condition number nine. I always like it not coming back to us, because then it's easier for us. But I think that, from my standpoint, this case, I don't, I have 17 hotel rooms, 17 rooms, there, you have 13 spots, that nine and a half width, it seems like it's a five-pound, a two-pound bag. I'm just thinking with the, but on the other side, is that I think the street needs it. So I'm torn between the street, looking at that street, it's definitely, I don't want to say tired-looking, or what's there currently, and then balancing this five-pound bag issue with this. So I'm having trouble, I'm definitely having trouble with the set with 13 spots for 17 people, 17 people coming in. You know, when I've traveled to Europe 15 times, you always have parking spots. Traveled all over the United States, I don't, I don't remember ever showing up, and if they didn't have parking, which you get, you get a voucher to go park somewhere else. And so I don't like the idea of us just saying, "Well, the neighborhood can handle it, I own one park place, if I go to the old Colony Club, I can never find a parking spot." So, so I find it very difficult, I just don't feel like kicking it down the road, unless the board can convince me otherwise.
We don't, we don't need relief on the number of parking spots, keep in mind, and, and the same, an actual lesser ratio was approved unanimously by the board last year for three chilton in a 20SL zone, not even downtown harbor.
Separate case, though.
Hmm? No, no, but I'm just pointing out the, the, you know, but again, we weren't looking for the relief on parking spots.
What I was going to say in response to it was, I'm kind, everyone knows I'm kind of the, one of the hard-line 10-foot guys, especially with my truck and everything, especially in, in shopping malls and stuff, I think, should be nothing less. But I do think, my wife and I have been to a place similar to this down in Winston-Salem a couple times, because the kids live down that way, and they never have enough room for us, so, and I think their space is a little smaller. And it, in a small hotel like that, I think it works okay. So, I'm not, I'm not troubled in this case, and I'm usually the one that is troubled by 10-foot.
We did, as a point of reference, so, Lark Hospitality is a nationally-known management company. They started out in New England, they have about, I think it's 25 or 28 hotels that they either own or manage in New England, all very similar, like the Newport Collection and some things in Booth Bay Harbor and those type of things, all boutique hotels, none of them are flagged hotels and, you know, 100-room hotels. And so we worked with them on this plan, and they were perfectly content with the number of spaces and ratios compared to their other hotels. And again, about 25 or 28 of them are in New England and very, very similar properties, all of which are in downtown-ish areas, anywhere from, you know, again, Bar Harbor down to, I think they have one in Provincetown, so pretty much spanning the range in, in New England.
Okay, anybody else?
Just getting back to DPW comment four, I just think that we, we deal with it as, as part of condition nine, that they have to satisfy, and maybe we just take the word waiver out, that they've satisfied the turning radius of the fire department and they've satisfied the DPW.
So if they come back and inform, or answer some of the questions.
Exactly, yeah. I don't know if that's okay with you gentlemen?
Okay, because I was just looking at the, I just went through 2037, and I'm looking to see where that was in there, I can't really pick it out, so, but anyways, well, what does the board feel comfortable with? One is, myself, I don't feel comfortable with passing anything out than the advertised waivers, period.
Agreed, yeah.
I think the board agrees on that. I hate to do that. I don't know that your suggestion would do anything around it anyways, so I guess that's what I get to ask you, is how do you feel comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I have certainly had projects in the past that there were comments by the DPW that we could not fully satisfied, and we'd come to the ZBA, or in some cases, the planning board on a VOSD, and say, "The DPW is here, we're here, it's partially satisfied," or whatnot, and the board has allowed that. I can't state, Mark has a better memory than I do, but I can't state exactly what they were, but they were little ones throughout the last 13 years. I consider that in that same sort of spectrum, that I would see the, you know, this board having the ability to say, "This comment doesn't need to be satisfied, you don't need to come back with that satisfied." And I, again, I think it's somewhat of a non-starter, I don't think it belongs there. The problem we have is that they're stating in their memo, "Seek relief from the ZBA." So satisfying it is to get relief from the ZBA when it's not their purview to tell us to seek relief from the ZBA. That's just not their job, it's building departments, and it's, you know, it's very much stepping over the lines.
Yeah, and, and the only way we can do it to satisfy them, unless they amend their response here, would be to come back to you guys, we'd have to republish, I guess, if that's your position. So, again, we're kind of in a catch-22 here, unless you, you know, want to waive this DPW comment, you know, otherwise, we're going to have to come back unless they change their position.
Can I jump in, maybe make it a little bit easier?
So, the comment was made when there were all nine-foot spaces. So, when we went to the planning board, the planning board says, "Okay, can you adjust your spaces to make them 9.5?" I'm confident that I would, I need to go back to the DPW for some housekeeping items that need to be cleaned up, as Ed indicated, that all the comments have to be satisfied. I'm confident that we go back, tell the engineering department, "The spaces are now 9.5." So the idea of backing out more than once, we think with the 9.5 spaces, that is not, not warranted. They come back more often than not, not saying that they agree or not agree, but they just say, "Comment acknowledged," and I think that's what's going to happen.
Okay, well, apparently, David did find it, yeah.
Well, they mentioned it.
Go ahead, Dave.
Well, they almost don't have to talk about getting a new waiver, the first couple sentences say, "Just demonstrate the, the parking," right, and it's just like the fire, fire truck.
Right.
Confirm that there's turning space at the end of the parking is sufficient, you just, you have to demonstrate, confirm that.
Without backing up more than once, though.
Right.
That would have more to make.
Now, a question for the two lawyers in the room. If, if we had to deal with it afterwards, can they do that under a modification?
Well, I would think it wouldn't be substantial, first of all.
So, in other words, go back, if there's an issue, where it's...
So if they were, so say it doesn't get, say we approve this, and it is a, it is a, it isn't, they don't go along with the program, or whatever you want to call it. If it's non-substantial of a change, you don't have to come before us.
Well, again, it's kind of ironic, we'd arguably come before you without public notice, which is kind of the whole genesis of this discussion, right, is like, well, does the public actually have knowledge, adequate knowledge about the nature of this project, that this board's comfortable granting the relief that wasn't explicitly published? And again, my contention is, I think we have one-a-butter speak here, we've been through two other public venues now, everyone's seen plans, you know, there's a robust record...
But just from a legal side, I don't even think you need to go there.
Pardon?
If the change isn't substantial, why would you have to come back here?
Uh, well, so let's just say...
So we approve this.
Right, so worst case, so you approve it, subject to return, subject to a clean DPW letter, more or less?
Or, or subject to the satisfaction of you. And so, say what the DPW comes back in, we'll have to see, but I think that if you needed more, I don't think it's a substantial change to your project.
No, I mean, I'd certainly agree, I think this is a...
So I don't think it, I don't think you'd have to come before us, anyways.
I think they still have to come back to us.
Yeah, they'd have to come back to us and ask...
They have to make that determination.
It all depends on how your vote is, how you vote tonight, right? If your vote reads, you know, "Project approved, subject to these conditions," and one of the conditions is, you know, DPW letter, the satisfaction to the zoning board of appeals...
Then they've got to come back to us.
And that's the condition right now.
You know, that, that would be your typical condition, be something along the lines of, in fact, I have the Chilton Street vote right in front of me here, so I can tell you what your verbiage, I'm sure it's in here, because we see it routinely. The granting of this permit is subject to the following condition, "The petitioner shall address engineering comments to the satisfaction of the zoning board of appeals." So, again, you issued Chilton Street with that as the fifth condition, "Address engineering comments to this board's satisfaction." So, that would give you the latitude if the DPW has hung up on this very minor technical item and says, "Well, you still need a waiver." Again, it would be your discretion to say you're satisfied.
That's already condition nine on the planning board recommendation.
Yeah, you've already got it in there. So, so, again, I guess, you know, but, but it's sort of, we're kind of talking ourselves in a circle here, if everyone thinks it's minor, you know, what are we really, you know, it's a question of how much deference you give to the DPW, I think, on something that really doesn't impact the design of the project.
We do give tons of deference to the DPW, I mean, they're, they're go-to guys, and I would never not back them up, ever.
Okay, so, how does the board want to handle this? I mean, do we feel we definitely want to stick to the advertised advertisement for the waivers? I would say, yeah.
So, Mr. Flaherty mentioned that we keep nine as it is and see what happens, and Mr. Flaherty's confident that mostly they'll say, "Comment acknowledged." And I think that's a, how from our board, that should be our decision.
What did the October 29th letter say? Because we haven't seen that, or at least some of us have not seen it.
So, I want to, it just says you need another, they should come to the board and request a waiver. Can you pass it down to David?
Yeah.
David, I think it was the same language as the October 14th.
Oh. Did I sign on Chilton Street? I don't think I was here.
You weren't, you didn't vote on Chilton Street.
No wonder I don't remember those nine-foot spaces.
Not seated, Peter Carter.
I think that's why you refused to come to the meeting.
I did, probably was, I was traveling, maybe.
So...
Well, it's, you know, it says, that it's, the applicant has requested an additional waiver, so we're in a quandary, because we can't act on it, right, because they haven't officially asked.
So the 100% hasn't asked, and we can't modify that, because it doesn't have that golden language in there.
Just forget about it.
Requested items that Manfredi used to put in there. So I think we're stuck on that issue, and, and the petitioner, petitioner's counsel for engineers said that it's likely it's going to not be a big deal anyways. So I think, from our standpoint, stick with number nine, how it reads.
So, from what I'm hearing is, are we okay with going forth with the original, with the planning board report with the nine conditions?
Yes, I am.
I am, myself. So, am I going to hear a motion, or...
Yeah, you're going to hear a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve case 4185, 4186, and 4187, with the, what is it, nine?
Nine conditions.
With the nine conditions presented here tonight.
I will second that.
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, so, just one opposed?
Yeah, that was in favor.
Thank you.
On the way. Okay. So, let's see, next up one is the 162 Taylor Rav. I'll have you read the ad.
Case number 4193, I'm not sure I got that right, yep. Plymouth zoning board of appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall... will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, 26th Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. On Monday, November 3rd, 2025, at 6:00 PM to hear the petition of Emmett Shaw requesting a special permit required per section 206.2G2 to allow major construction within the floodplain overlay district per section 203.9C to expand or alter a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and waive the required setback on the property of 162 Taylor Ave, shown as parcel 045B00000204O of the assessors map dated January 1st, 2024, in an R20S zone. The petitioner, or his or her representative, or any other person interested in desiring to be heard on this request, should appear at the time and place designated.
Okay, before you go, sitting on this case will be Mr. Wallace, Mr. Conroy, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Connors, and Mithal. Go ahead, and who's speaking?
My name is Rick Savant. I'm a professional land surveyor with Stendek and Taylor. I did a survey and prepared this plan for this project. And this project is an existing single-family home, 162 Taylor Ave. I'm sure you're familiar with the area and management. What we're proposing is basically a raise and rebuild on this site. The existing structure is non-conforming to the property lines and also to the flood regulations. So, what we're proposing is to raise the existing house, build a new house elevated on driven wooden piles. The house will be about eight to nine feet off the ground that will be parking underneath the house. The pilings are required in the barrier beach zone that we're in, and on the beach, and in the particular AE flood zone that we're in. We did make some attempts to improve the setbacks of the structure from the existing. At the closest point, the existing house is 4.7 feet off the right side. A portion of the deck is only three feet off. So, we did square the proposed structure on the lot, made it seven feet off the line while leaving the other side compliant. The existing left side of the home is existing, in compliance with the 15-foot setback. So, we brought it, read it to 15 and a half, and then go right to 15, but we kept that side conforming, and we made the other side more conforming than the existing structure. So, based on the planning board's comments they were at a couple of weeks ago, I didn't have much of an issue with it. The house is in compliance with the flood regulations, which is certainly an improvement over the structure that's there and just seeking relief for extension of a non-conforming structure and without making it more non-compliant.
Okay, any comments down this end? Tom? Ed?
So, did you respond to the engineering department's comments in writing?
I wasn't, well, no, I was not aware of any. They must have been fairly recent. I did not see those.
So, the engineering comments, they dated October 14th.
Okay.
The planning board meeting was on the 22nd.
Right.
Did the planning board address any of them?
On the 28th, they issued their staff report, so last Tuesday, I guess.
So, we have engineering comments, and from my standpoint, I don't know if they're satisfied or not. Do you wanna go through them, so...
Yeah, I haven't seen that. I have planning board's comments, but not engineering department.
So... Denise, do you have a copy of them handy?
They were on the portal.
On the portal?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, I have a, I printed out.
Thank you, Denise.
Sorry, Denise.
Okay, so I see their first comment is, "Provide a stabilized construction entrance," which you certainly can do. First five feet. The applicant's response, "If there's any repair or damage to the concrete sidewalk during the construction, and the repair must conform to the town standards," which certainly don't have an issue with any of that. Silksacks in the catch basins on the street, also, not an issue, we'll certainly comply with that. A street opening permit will certainly be needed for the project. It's item number two, which the, will be during the permit process.
Any other questions while Ed's looking that over?
I'm not looking it over. I just wanna, I want the answers. I don't wanna look at anything.
All right, well...
It seems to be more direction on what they want. From what I see here, we're agreeing through it quickly, that these things are necessary on the site. Clarify the existing water service. It's proposed to be reused and abandoned. Or abandoned, forgive me. We're planning on reusing it. But I can provide or any demolition, the contract shall coordinate with the water division, which I think is pretty standard, that you need to cap the service off before you demo the house and any other utilities that are there, electric, constructed on pilings. And we must, the applicant provide information how the water service is protected from freezing on the piles as it comes up out of the ground. Certainly comply with all of those things. But, it's the first time, I should have seen it on the portal.
It's unfortunate that you didn't get these ahead of time. Because that third one there requires something changed in the plan, right?
Yeah, freeze protection for the water service, very standard.
There's also, number four, encourage to increase the side yards. But suggestion I'd have is that...
That's planning board.
The applicant shall meet the requirements of the DPW, because most of them look minor and achieve, very achievable to the satisfaction of the inspectional services. This looks pretty straightforward, would be my suggestion. But they have to satisfy DPW comments.
Right.
Can we ask Spencer what he thinks?
Yep.
What do you think, Spencer? So, we have a situation where everyone that comes before us responds to the engineering department, and they say, "Satisfied, to be satisfied, or not satisfied." We have a situation here where the applicant didn't read the, or didn't look at it. So, what do you think?
I would recommend if you, if you were to condition that they satisfy those to the satisfaction of either the building commissioner or to yourselves, the zoning board, as with previous cases.
I have a question, either Ed or Spencer, maybe both of you. On section 206.2G2, how do I interpret number six? The relief requested by this permit is the minimum necessary. Is that talking about size of things, or what? I don't know.
To my understanding, that's the amount of waivers that are required for this project, whether that be dimensional relief, such as setbacks or height waivers.
Okay.
You know, the minimum amount of relief they need to go forward with their project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple for you. One is, so, you went before October 7th, you went before conservation, right, correct?
Correct.
And that was approved?
Personally, but our representative did, it was approved, the conservation, yes.
It was approved.
Yes.
How many bedrooms was this?
Two.
Two, okay. And the reason I ask that is because when I look at the plan and, this was another question I was gonna ask Spencer. So, you got two bedrooms, but when I look at the first floor plan, do you have a copy, you don't have a computer over there, or do you?
I don't have the floor plans in front of me. I have the planning board recommendation letter, though.
Okay, 'cause, well, what I'm looking at on the first floor is, you know, of course, I was a builder, is the living room has, you know, a door and four walls, its size, and actually, the fire department put a smoke in it as if it was a bedroom, because I think it's, when, all in all, if they don't take down those walls, or at least take that door out, it's considered a bedroom, correct?
Well, they took out the closet.
I would not be able to answer that as far as the building code question goes.
Okay, 'cause I mean, you know, I look at that as, again, the fire department, I'm looking at what they have there, and they have a smoke detector in there, which they always do in a bedroom. And it's got the, a door and a closet, and it meets the size of a bedroom. That could be considered another bedroom. You know, it's almost like they need to remove that wall and door. Go ahead.
So, you're right, that was, as you saw on the staff report, they did recommend that, not through conservation, but at the planning board, that the closet be removed, you know, from that. Is that correct, Rob, the builders here, and...
Oh, yeah, come on. You're gonna, you have to speak up up there.
That's Robert Clogston, the builder and designer of the project.
Yeah, so, I did, Bob Clogston, Clogston Construction Remodeling. I designed and I am building this structure. I did already update the set of plans. I didn't, I don't believe you have it there, but I do have it on my computer if you wanted to take a look. Basically, I removed the door on that front living area. I put a four-foot cased opening in, and I also removed the closet, as well as the closet in the upstairs office area.
Yeah, I mean, upstairs, so, but I, you know, again, I'm looking at it and thinking to myself, "Okay, so we got a living room here with a door and a closet. It's another bedroom," to me, you know what I mean? Because I'm, I used to build myself. That's the code. So, you did take that out, because it will make that a condition if we get that, yeah, there you go. I would wanna make a condition that that be removed, you know, that...
Yep.
I understand part of it, the wall is the deck, so that's not a problem. But that area be opened up, so it's not a bedroom. Are there any other questions, or I'm gonna go to public comment?
Well, we're gonna have to have a revised plan anyway. That shows what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I'd feel comfortable, when they go to the building department, I feel comfortable about that.
Okay. I got you. He's nodding yes, so we'll put him on the...
Yes, well, they apply for the building permit, that will be reviewed. And if it's a condition, then it will be on the building permit as well.
Right.
Okay.
Is there any other questions, or I'm gonna go to public comment? Okay, I'm gonna open this up to public comment. Anybody to speak in favor? Anybody to speak against? Okay. When you go up there, let us know your name and make sure the light's on and...
Okay. My name's Anthony Pronsky. I'm director butler at 164 Taylor Ave. I'm very concerned about the installation of the wooden piles for this project. My cottage is a old, my cottage has a shallow block foundation, only two feet deep, and is approximately 60 feet away. The area has a high water table in sandy soil, and my cottage shakes when heavy trucks go down Taylor Ave. I believe the builder is gonna put some monitors to try to help me out from my foundation. I just wanna confirm that. And I'm also asking for some relief. The sideline setback to my property is seven feet, whereas the opposite side is 15 and a half. And I was requesting the new dwelling be centered on the lot, if that's possible. Thank you for your time.
Any other comments? Okay, if not, I'm gonna bring it back to the board. Tom, any?
Do you want some answers to that question?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, he can't because of conservation, but...
As far as the piles, yeah, there will be some monitoring devices set up. We've done similar projects. I understand his concern. Wooden piles are required in this zone. The machine that puts them in is a vibratory machine versus the old pounder that puts them in. But there will be monitoring there, and it is required to have wood piles. And as far as the centering, I'm sure you're familiar with that, but I think we need a variance to encroach inside the 15-foot sideline setback, which we hadn't asked for at that point. We're keeping it conforming on that side. And we are improving the setback on that side from four to seven feet. So, existing dwelling is closer than the proposed.
Right, and that's what the relief is about. This is a non-conforming use moving forward, so not a problem. Tom?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Down this end?
I'm okay.
Yeah, well, okay, so, do I hear a motion? And second, who's, any motions here?
I will motion that we approve case number 4193 with the six conditions.
Eight, six conditions. Who's gonna second it?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Okay, last up on the list is an informal, and it's 168 Warren Avenue, unit six? Or, is that eight? It says unit six, but I think it's... Your name and, and... Oh, okay, yeah, actually, well, no, it'd be the people that were on it originally. Because this is a, this particular one is, we have to decide for us whether it's a substantial modification or not. So, that's what's before us. No, Michael's not, but we can go with the four. So, on this would be Mithal, Mr. Connor, Kevin, O'Reilly, and, oh, and Ed Conroy. Thanks, Pete.
Good evening, members of the board, and thank you again for your time and for your prior approval of this project. My name is Jordan Race. I'm a principal at Crafted Design Built, representing Kate and Ryan Burke at 168 Warren Ave. Since our original submission, the design has evolved after a much closer look at the existing structure and the level of investment required to move forward. Initially, we had proposed a partial second floor and about 450 square feet of added living space, bringing the overall height to around 21 and a half feet from 18 feet. As we refined the design and fully assessed the cost, it became clear that the amount of structural work, engineering, and new systems required essentially equates to a full rebuild without the foundation. Given that level of investment, the homeowners couldn't justify the project without adding more usable space. So, the revised proposal includes a full... So the revised proposal includes a full second floor, increasing the addition from 450 square feet to 1,000 square feet with a new ridge height of about 27 feet. We've been very mindful to keep the scale and proportions consistent with the surrounding homes. The new design remains well within neighborhood character with massing that steps down appropriately and materials that match the local aesthetic. This change doesn't alter the intent of the original approval. It's still a family home being rebuilt in a respectful way, but it ensures that the project makes financial and functional sense for the family. We appreciate the board's continued consideration and are happy to address any concerns about the updated design or how we've worked to maintain the intent and spirit of the original approval. And we have Ryan and Kate here tonight, as well as a couple of their neighbors from the association.
Right. And I was going to say, the bedroom count remained the same.
It did, yeah.
And what's the square footage difference?
It's 550.
Okay. All right.
So what's the, what was the proposed?
The proposed addition was 450 square feet of added living space, and the new plan has roughly 1,000 square feet of added living space.
So that's for the addition?
So it's 550 more than the original plan, which is accomplished mostly on the second floor.
All right. So the total increase is from 450 of living space?
Yep.
To 1,000 living space?
Yes, sir.
Footprint, same?
The footprint is, if you look at the plans, the footprint is a small addition on one side, and then we're just taking over the porch that's there already.
And the height goes from 21 to 28?
Yes, sir. Yep.
So, okay. I don't know if you want to hear anything more from me, but to me, this is substantial change.
Okay. David, any?
I think it's substantial as well, without a doubt.
Substantial? Okay. So I can see from the board's point of view, it's substantial, what they feel is substantial, which it will take a modification to changes, so you'd have to apply for a modification to it. My, I looked at it myself, and actually, I looked at the one directly across the street. It's actually smaller than that, you know, and I was, when I open it to public comment here, I see how the association feels, but myself, I'd be willing to call it unsubstantial, but it is, it is quite a bit, you know? So let me open it up to the public, because we'll hear from the association there and see what happens.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm going to open it up to public comment. Anybody want to speak in favor?
I would just comment if I could that it doesn't matter what they think.
No, no, but I, but.
It's what we think.
Good evening, members. My name is Tom Rook. My wife Nancy and I are next-door neighbors to Ryan and Kate. We've been there for 20 years, and I can attest that they're beautiful neighbors, which are two wonderful children. I am the president of the Warren Cove Condo Association, which consists of six members, and we had a meeting on Sunday in which it was unanimously voted to approve and endorse the recommendation for the petitioners of Ryan and Kate to expand their home. They are very good caretakers of their property. They have great pride in the property, and I'm convinced that their contractor, Jordan, is going to live up to the commitments that he's made to the condo association, and I think this is going to be a great improvement to the property. We have no concerns about the plans. We've endorsed it, and we support it immensely, and I would encourage you to vote in favor of it, and I'm free to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody else in the audience? Okay. I'm going to, I'll bring it back.
My wife's a climate supporter.
Okay. I'm going to bring it back to the board. But what's before us tonight is whether this is substantial change or insubstantial. The problem, problem being is you would have to file a modification to the original permit if we find it substantial. And from what I've seen from the board, you were on it too, Kevin.
Yeah.
Yeah. As they, I think everybody thinks it's substantial. Ed?
What do you think there? I would like to go back to you.
I will defer back to you on this one.
So there, there is case law about increasing percentages. I don't have the case law with me, but this is pretty substantial, if we're just looking at percentages. You go from 450 to 1,000, doubling it.
Hmm.
And the height, you're going up 25 percent. I think minors, like less than 10, I thought.
Right.
So just doing the math, I have to say it's substantial, but I don't, I don't really want to pump through it, to be honest with you.
And how about you, Kevin?
Well, if you just go, go by what Ed said on the regs, I don't have any problem at all with the project. I'm just concerned if we're going to be setting any kind of precedent here.
Right.
In terms of what the percentages are, and some larger project comes in with similar percentages.
Right.
And I sympathize with the homeowners, though, and it looks like a great project and the neighbors are support, but there's still, still standards we have to comply to here.
Exactly.
We did allow a nine-foot space, though, Peter.
This is the first, I don't, this is the first 20 years I've never seen, 2009, I've never seen you go along with it.
It's soft.
Getting old or something. I don't know.
Even though you're not on it, Tom, you got a comment or?
Yeah, I listened to what Ed says. What is the, assume this board declares it's substantial. What burden does that put on the homeowner?
He will have to file for a modification to the original permit.
Slows it down.
It's, yeah. Basically, he'd have to do a modification. To me, it sounds like if they, if we go that route, you'll be fine, but I think the board just feels, or from what I've heard so far, that they feel it's substantial and they want to pass it as a modification.
And they'd have to come back to us at a later date to approve that.
Yes, yes, correct.
So there'd be more filings, more costs.
Right.
And it looks like there is no November 17th meeting, correct? So it looks like, even if I could get the paperwork together.
You couldn't get in that quick, anyway.
Right. And so then I'm running into.
It hasn't been published. It's got to be published.
Right.
Then I'm running into summertime on the other end, which candidly is, yeah, bad, because they missed this last summer.
Okay, Pete?
Yeah, I'm in full support of this. Looks great, and I understand the reasoning for it, but we, we have our, kind of our guidelines on what's substantial and what's not. When you add foundation space and you add this and you add, make it twice as high, there's no question about it. It's a substantial change.
Okay.
And I think it's a good one, but it's going to slow the process.
I will just compliment that by saying, I think it's a good-looking project, but that's not what we're being asked to.
Right.
It just is substantial, in my judgment as well. But it's a good, it's a good design. It's a good project.
Yep. So I guess that's where we stand, is you're going to have to file for a modification on You'll have to talk to Denise later for what dates we have open.
Okay.
Hate to do it, but I, it is substantial, and it should have to come back as a modification. I, I don't think you'll have a problem with it, but it needs to do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
And I thank the building department for sending it back. It was zoning. I don't know how far we got. I don't think we need one. He's got to apply for one.
We have to make a decision.
All right.
I would move on case 4164, that we have determined it is a substantial change.
I hear a second?
Come back for a modification.
I'll second that.
Did you get that, Denise?
Yes.
Okay. And who seconded it? Kevin seconded it. All those in favor? And opposed wouldn't be any. All right. So that's, you will have to file for a modification to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. And I believe that's the end of our business. So do we have, it says minutes. I didn't have any, yeah. Okay. So do I hear a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second half.
Okay. All those in favor? Yay. Done. We now adjourn.